Afternoon, everyone. Thank you for coming. We're ready to start our study session meeting. Today is Tuesday, March 13th, 2018. It is 2:00 PM. And Clerk Scott, would you like to call roll?
Mayor Mangarelli is excused. Mayor Protem Orr?
Here.
Councilman Blair?
Here.
Councilman Good?
Here.
Councilman Lamerson?
I'm here.
Councilwoman Scholl?
Here.
And Councilman Sishka is also excused today.
Like the entrance.
Thank you. So today, we have two items, and we will allow public comment. If you would like to comment on either of these presentations that are being made regarding our Tourism Advisory Committee, ask that you please fill out the form and present it to Clerk Scott. Okay, Mr. Heine.
Mayor Protem Orr, thank you for having me today. We have two items that we're going to talk about regarding tourism in the Tourism Advisory Committee specifically. We do have two TAC board members here today. Our Chair, Margot Christensen, and then Cindy Gresser is also here as well. So thanks for giving me the opportunity to discuss the TAC grants, which we're going to talk about first. So as you recall, last year in August, we had the review of the TAC grants for 2018. And at that time, we presented our findings, and council sent us back for a little bit more work to take a closer look at, a little bit more direction on how we disseminate the grants and what we're looking at when we decide how to give the TAC grants out. At the time, council felt there was a little too much emphasis on just paid advertising for marketing the events and activities. So we took a look at that and kind of revised things. What I pledged to do was go back and review the entire process and look at perhaps some other examples from DMOs and organizations throughout the state that are doing similar types of processes. So that's what I have for you today. We did, took a look at similar processes in other destinations. We looked at Scottsdale, Flagstaff, Lake Havasu, Las Cruces, New Mexico, and Seaside, Oregon to give us a little bit of variety. So all these organizations do a similar type of thing where they provide dollars to organizations that are bringing events into town, specifically looking towards bringing heads and beds, bringing people to stay the night for these events. We did revise the policy slightly. I presented it to the Tourism Advisory Committee, and they wanted us to share the findings with you. So here are some of the highlights of what we have changed between last year and this year. There's still a continued emphasis on the use of funds for marketing, particularly outside of 100 miles, because sort of that distance gives us the opportunity for people to come and spend the night, to encourage that overnight visitation. We're also looking at a positive economic impact. So, you know, aside from heads and beds, are they coming, are they spending money at restaurants and, you know, retail? So that's something we're looking for as well. And then we also want to emphasize positive community impact. Another, I guess another comment that we had heard over the years was, you know, we might be donating to an organization, and they might be then donating to another organization as part of their event. Sort of de-emphasizing that and looking at, overall, how are they working with other organizations in the community? Are they coordinating with volunteers and doing things where they're, you know, they're coordinating but not necessarily donating that money on to another fund? So those are kind of the three areas we looked at. The other thing, and this is important, is we've, with the new process, we've built a new flexibility. What we learned from some of the other organizations was, even though there is a strong emphasis on marketing, there are other needs for the events as well. So what we did with this new process is allowed for 75% of the funds must go towards marketing the event, but we're allowing for 25% of those funds to be for other uses. So if there's a need for equipment, barricades, things like that that we've heard from previous organizations, it gives them a little flexibility. So we thought that would help with the process. We have the same allocation, or we're recommending the same total allocation this year of about $40,000. Last year, just for reference, we gave out about $37,500. So we do have the same amount budgeted. We just wanted to build in that flexibility and kind of simplify the process. Just to give you an idea of a timeline, so assuming that we're, you know, council's okay with this process, we're going to start, we're going to start this next week, or excuse me, on the 22nd of March. So, and then we want to tighten the timeline so that we can bring everything back to council in June. If you recall, we were doing this in August before, and some events had already sort of occurred that we had approved, so we want to get council approval earlier in the process. So that's some of the changes. So we'll have the grants open on March 22nd. We have a mandatory meeting for all prospective applicants on the 28th, and then the deadline will be April 27th. So it gives them a little bit more than a month, about six weeks. We would like TAC to review it in May and then make recommendations to council and have council reviewed in June. So that's sort of an overview of what we are looking at with some of the changes.
Question?
Yep.
How are we advertising or notifying the prospective grant folks?
Sure. So what we're going to do is multimedia, so we will do a press release in the paper, so it's open to the public to see that. We'll do it through our social media channels, both through the City of Prescott Official and the Tourism Facebook page as well. We will actually notify by email and by letter. We'll notify previous grant recipients from the past couple of years. We'll also call, phone call, folks that received it last year. So multiple ways to make sure people know about this.
Then also tie in the chamber, understanding some of these folks, our chamber members as well.
We can work with the chamber as well. I think the mailing list that we have, or that they have, would be inclusive, so we'll make sure we get the word out.
Any other comments from council? Good job, John. I know you've worked on that a long time.
Yeah, thank you.
Before we go there, I, we leave this, you know, we have had people come back to us last year that said, "We missed the boat." Is that boat going to be docked this time, or we are firmative about that? We're not going to go back and say, "Okay, sorry, you missed it?" Or are we going to be firm on how we proceed with that?
In terms of the dates and everything, yeah, I think we're going to stick with the date process for opening and closing. So the one thing is the mandatory meeting on the 28th. What we're very clear about is even if the president of the organization or someone can't make it, if they can send a representative to be there, because that meeting is important that they hear the guidelines, especially with the changes this year, we think it's important that they, that someone from the organization be there to hear that so that they can carry that back to the organization.
Right. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I have one. John?
Yes.
You know, we've spent many happy hours together discussing a lot of different things. And, you know, one of the biggest issues I've ever had with these sort of funding is the fact that we haven't really identified the word tourism. And you and I both know that somewhere in the vicinity of 75% to 80% of the people that visit Prescott from outside of the Prescott tax base are local. They're not from Germany, they're not from England, they're not from someplace else. They come here from Prescott Valley, Chino Valley, Yavapai County, et cetera, Phoenix, Tucson, et cetera. I want to ensure that when we market, we market to our base, the people that actually keep this community functioning, you know?
Absolutely.
24/7, 365. So I'm not sure that 30,000 is the right number, but what I am sure of is that we need to market to the right constituent. And that's what I'm sharing with you.
Sure.
We need to be marketing to those people that come up here from outside of the city of Prescott and spend money here. They stay here. And we know, because having been on the board for the chamber for many years, we know that a number of those people are from the state of Arizona, not necessarily someplace else. Just sharing that one with you.
Sure, absolutely. And you and I have talked, and we've shared with everyone, that our number-one visitor market, you know, is Phoenix and Phoenix Metro. So in this actual, in this request, we're asking organizations to tell us where they plan to market, and we are asking for them to give us an idea. We are definitely looking for, you know, the Phoenix Metro, 100 miles or more is what we're, what we're looking for. So that would fit right in with what you're saying.
Thank you very much. You know, and I see who's sitting in the audience and everything. You know, a lot of the people that come up here and enjoy our museums, or enjoy our hotels, or enjoy our restaurants, or our bars, et cetera, are not necessarily from someplace else on the planet. They're from right down the street.
Sure.
So just sharing it with you.
Thanks.
And John, will you be also requiring that they gather the data as we have in the past so that we?
Yes, there is a requirement that they gather data, because that helps inform us. There's a requirement that following, say they're successful in receiving the funds, within a certain amount of time after the event, they're going to share an analysis with us that indicates, you know, success with that zip code analysis. I've seen events do surveys for people walking in.
Sure.
Asking those questions, so we would expect that as well.
Great.
Mayor Protem?
That's from Good.
I had a question. The Buxton analysis clearly gives you a good idea of where the bulk of the tourists that come into Prescott to look at these events. But your scoring criteria gives a significant advantage to marketing that's done outside that 100-mile radius.
Yes.
That's 25% of the total scoring matrix.
Yes.
Is that really the best use of that scoring if the bulk of the tourists are less than 100 miles away, but organizations that market outside of 100 miles get a real advantage? I'm not sure if that's the best design.
Sure, I can understand that. So the thought behind the 100 miles is, as we discussed, to encourage?
Heads and beds.
Heads and beds, right, to encourage. So there is an analysis that says that the farther out you go, you're either a local or you're a day, what's called a day tripper, or you're an overnight. So we are hoping the organizations, we certainly want them to advertise within the Prescott area as well, but we want them to demonstrate that they are advertising to individuals and people that are outside of that 100 mile, because the money that we're giving out is from the bed tax. We're hoping that that returns to us in kind with the heads and beds. But it doesn't mean that if someone has a robust marketing campaign in Prescott, or Prescott Valley, or the region, that's still considered, but we also want them to understand the importance of advertising outside of the 100-mile radius.
My primary concern is if there is such a distinct advantage, and it turns out that agencies beyond that 100-mile radius end up getting more of the grant awards because they score higher, but they don't generate as many tax dollars because they aren't bringing in the actual tourists into the community as well as organizations that are closer, then we've kind of hurt ourselves.
Sure.
With those marketing dollars.
Sure. So as a point of clarification, the scoring matrix that you refer to talks about advertising for that particular event. So if you have, let's say you have a car show here, what we're looking for is your marketing plan that advertises in perhaps Phoenix Magazine or somewhere that's farther away. This does not give any advantage to an organization that is based outside of the 100-mile range. It's about where they advertise. Almost all, in fact, all of the recipients for the last several years, and we expect this to continue, are locally-based organizations, but we're asking them to advertise outside of.
And they're advertising outside?
We're asking them to advertise outside, exactly.
Councilman Lamerson?
Thanks. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you.
We're on the same page here, Phil. Fact of the matter is, most people that come up here and visit from either Phoenix or Tucson, or some of these other areas that are farther than 100 miles, also stay in beds. And the idea is, not only do they pay sales tax, they eat in the restaurants and all, they pay bed tax, which is 4%, et cetera. Fact of the matter is, is that I would like to see a more weighty advantage given to marketing here to attract who we know is 75% to 80% of our visitors, and trying to get them to stay here longer than to go home, you know? There's reasons why you would want to keep that 75%, 80%er here rather than letting them go home, you know? They're free to go wherever they want, but if you encourage them to stay here longer than a day tripper, there's an advantage to it for everybody concerned, and that's where I'm coming from.
And John, correct me if I'm wrong, those are outside of 100 miles. Phoenix?
Yeah, naturally, that would be the case.
So that would be, yes.
Naturally, that would be the case.
This bed tax comes from, only from people when they're staying here overnight.
When they're staying in hotels, or bed breakfast, or, yes, exactly. So, you know, I looked at, when I looked at some of the other destinations and some of their scoring, this is similar to that in the sense of emphasizing, you know, advertising for 100 miles away or more. That's pretty common, because statistically speaking, someone that's a certain distance away will most likely not come for the day, they'll spend, they'll spend the night. So again, we're saying to the organizations, "Please advertise. We want to see your posters and flyers and advertisements throughout Prescott, Prescott Valley and the area, but in terms of the grant award and the dollars that we're giving you to market, we would like that to be emphasized outside of the area." That's sort of what we're looking at, so that we can encourage the overnight stay. I would love to think that someone from, you know, Dewey or Williamson Valley would spend the night if they came to an event, but practically, it doesn't, wouldn't make sense for them necessarily. Not to say they wouldn't, but.
Exactly.
It's more statistically accurate if they do it over 100 miles, it's most likely that they'll do it.
Unless it's a St. Patty's Day event.
Well, this is true.
Maybe they'll stay.
This is true.
Or get a designated driver, one or the other. Any other comments from council? Alexa?
John, so part of the information you ask from the event themselves, estimated number of hotel room nights reserved.
Yes.
Are you guys seeing a return on investment? Are we making as much as we're giving out?
Um, I, absolutely, I believe so with some of these large events. I know we talked about Whiskey Offroad a couple of weeks ago. We are definitely seeing exponentially, you know, greater return on investment.
And was it Whiskey Row Offroads, an organization you gave a grant to last year?
That was not part of the grant process. I refer to that in the sense of, when we saw that, we looked at those numbers. But these are the same way. These are grants that are $5,000 or less.
Right.
And so again, if they're going to get a significant number of people, hundreds of people spending the night, we will definitely see that money in return. So that's always the hope and the goal.
Yeah.
And we ask for that report so that we can analyze that. And then sometimes there's events that, you know, they might qualify under all aspects, but they're not, for some reason, drawing people.
Yeah.
They're drawing local people. It's a great event, we support it, but are we going to use bed tax dollars to support it? That's the question TAC has to ask.
Perfect, that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman.
One more, one more statement there, though, John. The initiative for bed tax dollars was not only to promote tourism, it was to build parks and recreation. So when we talk about spending bed tax dollars, whether it's just filling beds, it's also to promote parks and recreation, and whether it's the bicycle race, or whatever, you know, hiking trails, or whatever the case is, are we promoting parks and recreation when we put some of the bed tax dollars into these things? And I would argue the answer is yes.
Absolutely.
It's not, you know, you got to remember what, specifically, what the, what the language of the ballot initiative was.
Absolutely, thank you.
Well, and we certainly have had the input from Recreation, Joe Baines's department, you know, all of those tournaments, they're multiple days, and they stay.
Yeah, but a lot of those.
Those are heads and beds.
A lot of those folks are quasi-local, too.
Some of them, right.
Not some of them, a lot of them are quasi-local, too. So you need, you need to put everything in the proper perspective, and if we take care of the infrastructure that's here for parks and recreation, the trails, the, you know, the trees, whatever. But the fact of the matter is, is that that helps the environment for parks and recreation. So that's what I'm sharing.
Any other comments?
Mayor Protem, I do have one speaker card from the public. Daniel Matson?
Good afternoon. The.
Daniel, could you say your name and your address, please?
My name is Daniel Matson, I live over on Merritt Street.
Thank you.
My thinking, since the vast majority of the population of the state is in Phoenix, and that's probably where we're going to get the highest number of people who are going to stay in the beds, I think you should take your compass on the map and look at where Phoenix is, which is less than 100 miles, and adjust that, because you've got Phoenix and Flagstaff are the, I mean, how many are we drawing from Tucson? That's the other place where all the people are. I think if they show that they're going to advertise heavily in Phoenix and Flagstaff, that should, that should count, because a lot of the people that come up from Phoenix are going to stay here after they've had dinner and a few drinks. So I think the 100-mile radius is arbitrary and should be changed to include the largest population center in the state, Phoenix, probably.
Daniel, you're scaring me. We agreed.
80 miles. Or go, I mean, or go by the road, because it's really how far they travel down the road. Phoenix, 95 miles or so. So we'll call it 90 miles by road. That includes Flagstaff from Phoenix.
Mayor Protem, another metric that is used is drive time. We saw that in the Buxton reporting. So you can, you know, we could use miles, 100 miles, 75 miles, but you could also look at drive time. Those statistics also give you kind of a good indicator of whether they're going, I think 140 minutes, drive time and more, becomes what statistically would most likely be an overnight visit. So that's another way, another metric that we could use and look at that.
Any other feedback? Okay, let's go on to the strategic planning.
All right. Just going to pull something up here. So just looking at, going back to October of last year, when City Council enabled TAC as an official city committee, actually, I think it came out of the meeting where we were talking about the TAC grants, the idea, suggestion to do that. One of the things that council asked in the, you know, as part of the resolution, was for TAC to provide a strategic plan for TAC and present that to council. So I'm happy to report that TAC met in February and had a facilitated discussion. I don't know, I don't think Darla DeVille's here, but she's from APS, and she, pro bono, did a nice four-hour session with us. Mayor Protem Orr, you were witness to that. It was a good four-hour session where we looked at some important items. We started with a vision and a mission statement, and then we also did SWOT analysis, a strength, weakness, opportunities, threat analysis, and then shared some goals and staff's working. So it's still a work in progress, but I wanted to share with you sort of the results from that meeting and kind of show you where we're heading with TAC. So I'm going to scroll down here to what we came up with. So through a facilitated session, we wanted a vision statement, which is sort of the overarching statement, and then a mission statement. And this is for TAC, which will help guide their decisions for tourism going forward at our destination. So what we came up with was, "Our vision for Prescott is to be Arizona's premier destination for all seasons, welcoming visitors from around the world." Pretty inclusive, I would say, so it's everybody, pretty much. And then mission statement is, "Our mission is to advise, inform, and collaborate with the Prescott Tourism Office, City Council, and community stakeholders to enhance the quality of life for our residents and the experience for our visitors." So again, they wanted to be inclusive in that comment in terms of who they're working with, obviously with council. Stakeholders is pretty much anyone involved in the tourism industry in this town, which is, you know, many different businesses. But also talking about the quality of, we talked a lot about quality of life for our residents as well. When Councilman Lamerson spoke about parks and recreation and trails, "We want those trails to be enhanced and beautified for the benefit of our residents as well as for our visitors." So this was the mission statement that was derived. And then we went into a SWOT analysis, a Strength, Weakness, Opportunity, Threat Analysis. So this was an interesting process where people basically wrote down their top three concerns under each of these areas, and we added them all together. It was sort of, you know, weighted by votes, and then we came up with sort of the top three. I'm just going to read to you the top three in each of these categories, but the full document is there as well. So strengths for Prescott. Charm, friendly, downtown plaza. Our weather, we have our four seasons, and then our outdoor amenities, the scenery, lakes, forestry, and topography. So those are some strengths that the TAC members saw for Prescott. Weaknesses, we really talked a lot about a limited amount of family activity and attractions. So this could be an event, or this could be an attraction, a permanent attraction that comes here. So we really feel like if there's more of those available in Prescott in years to come, we'll draw more. Air carrier and service is, at least from the TAC members' perspective, continues to be a concern, is a weakness. Negative attitudes by residents, non-welcoming. Those were, that's something that came up in the discussion, and just in, sometimes we see and hear things, especially on social media, that are unwelcoming type of comments, and I think the TAC members were concerned that we don't want to paint a bad picture. I think overall, the people of Prescott, I know for a fact that people of Prescott are wonderful, warm people, and I've, I've felt very welcome here over the years. We just want to make sure that any naysayers don't get to our visitors, and we want to keep it a very positive experience. Opportunities. Opportunities for new events. So we talked about family-friendly events and activities, so there might be some opportunities to create some new family-friendly or other types of events for the city. Expand midweek business. We talk about this a lot, midweek, you know, trying to help the hotels out to get, we, our weekends are busy, they're packed for the most part, but how do we get midweek business here, whether it's leisure travelers or business travelers, our groups? And then expand our regional airport. That's an opportunity that you all and many others are speaking about right now. And then threats. I think one of the threats they're concerned about is losing their charm and hometown feel, so that, you know, Best Old West Town, all those ratings that we get from True West Magazine, those kind of things, that's our heritage, that's our history. We want to make sure that we, you know, keep that. So that's important. Traffic bottlenecks, concerns about getting here and access. I know that some of those things are being addressed at the macro level, but that's still a concern, you know, for our visitors. And then parking, I think that probably equates to specifically downtown in that area, especially for events and those things. So those are some, those are some items that the Tourism Advisory Committee identified, strength, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. So it's something that we're going to, we're going to keep an eye on, and certainly any way that we can offer assistance to this body or others that are dealing with any of these things, but also come up with new ideas and new approaches. So with these, well, I guess, stop there and say, "Any questions?" before I move on.
Any comments, questions?
Vision statement? Sounds like it's making sense to everybody. This is, I think, definitely jiving with what we hear quite a bit, so. So with these items, then, we're going to come up with some objectives. This is actually the Tourism Office staff objectives. This is actually going to appear in your budget document. We're working on that currently, right now, in terms of some things that staff can do. So attract multi-day events, tournaments, especially during the shoulder season. Generate increased online presence for Visit Prescott website, you know, getting more people to see that and use it, use the tool. Generate increased bed tax by increasing total rooms booked, heads and beds. Use outdoor recreational assets to attract tourists and increase tourism in general. And then increase the number of group events in Prescott, and that's something that kind of our sales team's going to continue to work on with our hotel partners as well. So those are some of the objectives that are going to help kind of meet some of those goals. The next step is, we're going to share this back to TAC. We're going to develop more objectives and goals to help kind of meet that guidepost of where are we going, what are we going to be for the next five years? And once we get that kind of fully generated, we'll bring it back to council and share as well. And then the plan, and it's actually written in your enabling resolution, is for us to report on a yearly basis our progress.
Thank you.
And we will do that.
Thank you. Councilman Lamerson?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. John?
Yes.
From an industry standpoint, okay, business people normally have percentages for certain things, for certain types of expenditures, based on either the gross or the net. For example, in my industry, we recommend somewhere between 6% and 14% for marketing, based on whether you're talking about net or gross. So if we can, for example, put our finger on the number that we're using, which is $400,000, $500,000, where the bed tax comes in, for example, what portion of that would be appropriate for marketing? And it should be, if I was looking at it from a jewelry industry perspective, somewhere between 6% and 14%, okay? I also acknowledge the fact that not only do we collect bed tax per se, we also collect a certain percentage of sales tax directly attributable.
Right.
To tourism, okay? Directly attributable to events, okay? There are certain things that go on. So I would sometimes argue that the number that we're looking at might be a skewed number with regards to how we could best address Prescott as a tourism destination point from a marketing perspective in dollars. I'm just sharing that with you. That's been on my mind for quite a long time, being in the tourism business also, you know, that when I spend X amount of dollars out of my pocket, that doesn't necessarily mean that the city needs to do it, but a lot of the people that are in the tourism business here in the city do spend money to attract people up here, too. So we, I don't know that we have any sort of collective analysis as to who's spending what, where, and how much money we're actually spending into promoting tourism, not just the city of Prescott, but the city globally of Prescott, if that makes any sense what I just said.
Absolutely. That's a good question. That's a good question, that would probably have to be done with some sort of a business survey, to find out what their marketing expenditures are as well.
Yeah, you know, we always hear about, well, Flagstaff spends this, and Ethiopia spends this, and Guatemala spends this. Well, you know what? Here in Prescott, we spend a lot of money, too, and my money's just as important as anybody else's. So, I'm sure that the guy down the street with a, you know, pizza parlor, or the guy down the street a little bit farther with a, you know, antique store, or courier shop, or whatever the case is, we're all spending money on promoting tourism in Prescott. I don't necessarily think we've ever quantified how much money is actually being spent to promote Prescott.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
So, we have someone that would have to speak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sheldon Bates?
Excuse me, I wasn't prepared to do this, but my name is Sheldon Bates, I'm the president of the Prescott Antique Auto Club, who we've been pleased to be a member of the community since nineteen seventy, and we now have over four hundred and fifty-eight members in the club, which the club represents about six hundred classic and antique cars and, you know, different vehicles and stuff, and we've been putting on the Watson Lake Show now for forty-seven years. The last twenty-seven, twenty-eight years, we've done it at Watson Lake, and we've been very pleased to be able to use your facility. Unfortunately, if you go back about ten years, we were paying somewhere around five hundred dollars a year to use the lake, and then about seven years ago, the price went up to five thousand, and this last year, we went up over sixty-five hundred dollars to use the facility, and we've done nothing different than we've done before, other than growth event. Fortunately, this year, it looks like parking is going to increase, so we may be able to increase the gate because of having more room to park public cars. The tourism grant has been a very important thing to our club, because it helps offset the horrendous expense for running the park in comparison to what we've done in years past. So, the way it ended up last year, initially, all we were granted was the initial amount we put in for advertising budget, which most of our advertising at that time was done pro bono. We have large members of the club that have done a lot of PR work with different communities and national publications and newspapers, and getting ads out into all locations. We do advertise heavily in Phoenix, Tucson, and now we've realized we've missed an untapped resource in Flagstaff, and so we're planning on doing a lot more advertising there. But as Councilman Lamerson pointed out, most of that advertising that does the most good for our show isn't going to be outside, or inside of that hundred-mile radius, it's going to be a hundred miles or less. But that is a big draw, but even people coming from Flagstaff on a two-day show are probably going to want to stay the night, and we have over six thousand people come through the gate for the two days, and so, there, like you pointed out, there's a lot of tax revenue, we have food vendors, we have swap meet vendors, or parts exchange vendors that pay taxes and everything else. So, we think we do a tremendous job of drawing revenue for the city, and we love participating with the city. We restored ladder truck number one, we're in the process of restoring school bus number four, and we're proud to display it and be part of the city's events with those vehicles.
Mr. Bates, thank you. I will tell you, we value your event, for sure. And John, do you have any response? I know that you've spoken with Mr. Bates?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and just, for example, last year, it was modified to forty-eight hundred dollars, which was the Tac grant allocation. And, you know, I think when we went through this new process, we wanted to look at, I think I mentioned it earlier, earned media.
Exactly.
If you're getting PR, and, you know, and your organization, I've looked back, I mean, you've done a good job demonstrating over the years how you've marketed, so I don't, I wouldn't see any issue for-
So, that earned media, now, Mr. Bates, will be counted into the, to the formula.
Yeah, that'll be looked at as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's probably a matter of how to fill the paperwork out properly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming and speaking, thank you very much.
Mayor Protem, I have one more speaker.
Okay, thank you.
Sandra Smith?
Mayor Protem, council, good afternoon. I have a suggestion. This may be dumb, but it's something to think about. Parking is a problem, especially for downtown events. Why not set up areas for parking, like that old shopping center where we start the ride for work with the mayor, that nobody's really using? Park them there, get some businesses, draw some businesses in to rent scooters, or bicycles, or both, and let them come in that way.
Thank you for that suggestion. Thank you, Sandra. Any other comments? Councilman Lamerson, it's not showing, but-
Thanks. Yeah, you know what, we're going to have to do something about the electrical work here. Have to get in touch with Public Works or something, you know what I mean?
Go ahead.
All right. John, do we have the ability to quantify the amount of dollars, for example, the Antique Auto Show over a two-week weekend, two-week show? How much sales tax, bed tax, and whatever the other one is, there's a bunch of them, we tax everybody for everything, but there's about three of them. Anyway, do we have an ability to quantify the spike over those events, as to how much those events actually bring into the city?
We would have to be able to take a look at particular weekends, and it's interesting you ask that, because we, when we talked to Buxton, one of the questions we had was, can you give us a weekend-by-weekend analysis, so we can see that bump? Unfortunately, Buxton's data was not collected that way, and we were not able to see that, we had a year. But with existing dollars and bed tax dollars-
Well, I guess the point I'm trying to make, John, is we're partners, so to speak, with the people that we ask to come here and generate traffic, or generate bed tax, generate sales tax, et cetera. It would seem to me, we wouldn't want to be penalizing our partners for generating us money. To me, that seems sort of a bad business plan. It would almost be, if somebody comes to the community and generates for the community the same amount of money that we would be charging them for permission to do their event here, that it would be a wash, that you wouldn't be charging people for permission to come here and generate you tax, sales tax, et cetera. You'd be saying, thank you very much. Just sharing it with you.
Sure.
Any other comments?
No, Mayor.
John, anything else you would like to share?
No, thank you, we'll, we'll update you as we continue to round this out, so.
I really wanted to just really do a major shout-out to the Tourism Advisory Committee. These are people that do the work, they're in the hotels, they're in the restaurants, they're in the bars, and they know, and they have a real good feeling of what's going on, so, and they give their time every month to Tourism Advisory Committee, and so, Margot, Cindy, who else is out there that's on tourism advisory? We appreciate all you do, so, thank you very much. And thank you to your staff, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, this meeting is adjourned until our next meeting, which is at three o'clock, the voting meeting. Thank you.